Right, good evening councillors, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this evening's meeting of the Audit and Governance Committee. I'm councillor Barry Pippa Point, I'm the chairman of the committee and my vice-chairman, councillor Anton Dunnet, to my right. We'll move to part one of the agenda, the preliminaries. Are there any apologies?
Apologies have been received this evening for councillors Chris Mountain and David Scoot and the independent co-opted member, Jo Brigham. Councillor Helen Staples is here as councillor Scoot's sub.
Thank you. Does any members wish to declare an interest in respect of any item on the agenda, please? No? Right, can I have the committee's permission to sign the minutes of the last meeting, please?
On the minutes, I noted that the last meeting, there were a number of recommendations which our independent member and several committee members had. An apology, I didn't see anywhere else to bring this up on the agenda, but there's nothing on the minutes to show that those were recommended or that actions needed to be followed up. And I was hoping that perhaps that can be added to future minutes so this committee is aware of what it has recommended and we can chase that.
Can I just ask you to give us an example of one of the things that you've got in your mind that's missing on there? Can you just give us your thoughts? If you can remember what it was or one or two that was missing.
Did have it somewhere.
Doesn't matter if you can't.
I would say that on this, there was a section where our independent member said about inviting managers to comment about their areas of risk. Now, that is, in all fairness, slightly mentioned in it, but there's no, there's no action point, there's nothing to say that was actioned. And I think that'd be useful for the committee to have and be reflected in the minutes.
Thank you very much councillor Cantwell. I'll ask Pippa to make sure that in future, from the meetings, that we have these points listed on there so we can refer back to them, okay? It's very kind of you, thank you very much. So I'm going to sign the minutes of the last meeting, if there's nothing else anybody wants to raise before I do. Where are they? Oh, there they are, sorry. Are there any questions from the members of the public?
No, and chairman.
There's none. Okay, thank you very much. Then we'll, we'll move on to part two of the agenda, the agenda items. Item one on the agenda of this evening is the draft budget report 2024/25 to 28/29, which starts on page seven of the agenda pack. And I'd ask Christine Marshall, our officer, our director and our deputy CEO, to present them, thank you.
Thank you, chairman. I have prepared a draft presentation which is just behind you, so you just might wish to slightly reorient, or you can sit there. Wonderful. So this is to present to this committee your draft budget consultation. So a bit of an update on where we are with the four five budget. I'm really pleased to say we've got the final checks of the budget underway. We have seen significant improvements on last year's timelines, which I'm delighted to say. Your capital programme is in full draft, your revenue budget is in full draft, and also, again delighted to say, it is loaded into the finance system and will be ready to use on the first of April. We weren't in that position for this year, so I'm really pleased we're in that situation now. Settlement was received on the 18th of December and including the budget, and I will give a slight further update on that because we've had some additional announcements last week on the settlement. Just going on to the policy statement, so this is now the government's way of setting the budget. It's first of all, gives you a policy statement where it sets out some broad themes, and then just before Christmas, it tells you what your initial figures are. And then usually in February, it announces what your final figures are. What has happened was last week, there was almost like a midterm additional settlement that came through from the minister. So what we've seen is a business rates baseline funding level CPI increase. Now, what's really interesting about that is that hasn't actually fed through to the bills, that's been effectively backfilled by Section 31 grants. So again, the government is managing, if you like, impacts on businesses whilst also trying to feed through support councils. And that increase is probably now one of the remaining areas where your budget is positively increasing. That has also included indexation increases, so again, as positive. You've seen an RSG increase, that's in terms of the amount they've put into the pot, that doesn't necessarily feed through to pounds for the council in terms of increases, and again, I'll talk about that shortly. Council tax cap has been maintained at three per cent of five pounds, and that is despite representations from districts, that that is very challenging to maintain services with that. There's also been a funding guarantee, which you'll notice my use of the language is a three per cent increase in spending power, not necessarily a three per cent increase in grants. New homes bonus has been retained, but legacy years have been lost as previously intended. And you've got RSG DG is Rural Services Delivery Grant, so if you're in a rural area, they give you some additional funding and services grant have been retained. The consultation response was submitted, so the deadline for that was the 15th of January. So just to show you now your draft settlement, this was your settlement as at December, it has changed since then, so you can see that in 23/24, you had total grant of 1.387 million and your draft settlement was 1.391, a reduction of £4,000. Since then, the government has announced another £100,000 worth of support for Boston. What we do not know from last week's announcements is how much of the £3 million IDB funding we will gain access to. So you may recall, last year in May, we got some additional funding released from the minister to support IDBs. The Secretary of State announced last week there was going to be a further £3 million, but what is not known yet is what Boston's element of that will be. So we'll wait for that, and I suspect that will be in the next few weeks. So that is an improvement from where we were in December. Going on to your revenue budget itself and your medium term financial plan, we have revenue account reliance on new homes bonus of 343,000. My position on new homes bonus has changed a little bit since conversations with government. I think there's a clear expectation that councils will use that funding to support their base. You also have a very modest growth in your tax base, and that is a reflection that you have had not that many houses built during this period, so that's houses being add to your council tax, but also an increase in number on council tax support. So if anything, that's negated, you're increasing houses during that period. So £7.20 is that three per cent annual increase in bandee charge. It is quite a technical calculation, so because of it, those technical issues, it is set out in detail in the report on this occasion, and that will equate to 142,000. Again, your drainage board levy increases are significant for one drainage board alone, we expect that to be 227,000 pounds. So you can see in one fell swoop, your council tax increase has been wholly consumed by that. Business rate yield assumptions are still being looked at and the Nndr one is due this week, so that's a fairly critical piece of information we need to complete your budget. So going on to budget pressures and risks and pay, we've budgeted for four five at three and a half per cent. Was minded to set it at four to start with, but then the government made announcements with regards to downward pressure on pay via NJC for next year, so we've gone in at three and a half per cent, but that will depend on the final NJC settlement. So they effectively advise what that will be. IDBs, we've obviously got that government conversation ongoing, really pleased to hear about the £3 million and the commitment to seeking to find a long term solution. We were at a meeting with DEFRA and Deloitte last week and they did give, did give an indication they would ideally like to get that resolved before the five six settlement, which would be excellent if that was the case. Contract costs obviously increasing, there's not many contractors out there, haven't used the opportunity to put their contracts up by RPI. Rent rebates and rent allowances continue to be challenging, that's where you've got subsidy impacts, where we're providing support to people who are on benefits. Homelessness again is an area of focus and waste services. So what we're doing to offset that, we've got savings from your shared management arrangements, your investment income is, colleague on my left is performing very well in terms of its composition, and we've also had some electricity price reductions on those we originally anticipated. I think it's fair to say when we set the three four budget, we were very pessimistic and it actually came in a little bit better than that. So in terms of those further opportunities, we need to continue and push on that IDB conversation. Just to set that in context, for Boston, the increase between 21/2 and four five is 800,000 pounds. So that's how much the IDB bill, the levy has increased during that four year period. Clearly, that is very significant. You get no government grant for it, you cannot raise a fee and charge on it. You have very little government grants, you see it's flat, and you have a little bit of a, of business rates growth. So de facto, to cover off that increase, you have no choice but effectively to look at other options. And that is why, exactly why we're taking the position we are with government, trying to seek a long term solution. We've got service reviews that are actively underway, there's a lot of opportunities there, it's about sharing expertise across the three authorities and seeing, for example, if we have contracts, three different contracts, can we bring those contracts together and make them better value? We're also looking at any asset opportunities that are available. And a big one is driving economic growth to create business rate yield. It is one of our biggest income drivers now. If we can encourage that yield to improve further, then that is something we need to be looking into. And in terms of your reserves, which are considered to be reasonable, we look at commercialisation, investor save and smoothing peaks and troughs that we might have in the system. Going on to your fees and charges, your forecast for next year is 4.374 million. You might quite rightly ask the question, where has the leisure income gone? And that is now because it's outsourced within that contract, so it's no something, no longer something that we show as a, as a direct income to this authority, it's the contractor that uses that effectively to pay their bills because they're no longer your bills, because all of those salary costs and building costs, et cetera, have gone into that leisure contract. But income does continue to be a significant driver for the authority, so we do need to keep those fees and charges under review. And I am recommending as part of your budget that we seek to increase wherever feasible or possible by RPI. Obviously, sometimes they are set nationally, so we can only increase them when government allows us to do so, but outside of that is recommended that we go for RPI increases because your costs are certainly going up by RPI. And just as an example, at the lower end of the pay increase for three four, that was actually 10%. So, you know, we need to be seeking to recover those costs. Going on to your capital programme, you have a large capital programme, probably the largest you've seen for many years, I think it's fair to say, totaling 48 and a half million over five years, a very substantial programme, mainly funded through external grants. And we'll just go to the financing schedule here and you'll just see there, if you look at that funding underneath that programme of activity, you can see that you've got a significant amount of external grants. And we're also moving towards internal borrowing or MRP for asset replacement rather than use of reserves. That effectively means that you, if I use the example of a million pounds on waste vehicles, if we took that over 10 years as a life for that future 10 years, we'd be putting £100,000 a year aside. And then back again in year 10, year zero, you'd be able to buy your, your vehicles again. So moving towards an MRP approach rather than a reserve approach to funding. So just go back to the capital programme and you'll see there that you've got local authority housing fund, 2.797 at the top, that was obviously some grant you got to invest in properties. Townscape Heritage Initiative is some grant funding we've been trying to use for some time, so we need to look about how we make use of that, that funding. And you'll see then UKSPF, again, more grant funding you've received for use in the town and in the rural areas. And then you've got your Luff, your levelling up funding, which again is significant for Civic Hub, Crown House and Public Realm. And then you have your Towns Fund funding. What will be happening as part of the quarter three report is we'll be dealing hopefully with slippage from 23/24 into four five. So that will be where projects may not have concluded as expected, that spenders slipped, we'll be effectively rolling that forward and with the grant funding, the project will roll forward and the grant funding will roll forward with it. Going on to your treasury management, you have a detailed treasury management report on your agenda, but in terms of the budget, investment income is forecast to be 1.276. We do have significant use of reserves planned, mainly in terms of Jeff Mulder Leisure Pool, debt redemption discount following your debt redemption, you've got 642,000 pounds benefiting your base, property fund returns are forecast to be four per cent, no debt rescheduling forecast, you only have the one million pounds left now in terms of debt and unlikely to take any external debt as the focus remains on internal borrowing. So just again, a little bit more of a detail in terms of your pressures, pay three per cent, three and a half per cent also impact the previous year, which was nearer six, six and a half per cent, which was higher than the five we'd budgeted. IDBs, 335,000, significant figure, especially when you consider it against that council tax figure. Rent allowances and rent rebates, although we're doing more work on that at the moment. PSPS contracts, they similarly have a pay award to deal with. Internal and external audit, colleagues in the room, contracts have gone up in terms of PSSA contracts and also in terms of internal audit, service pressures as you would expect. Again, we're seeing a lot of contract uplifts feeding through. Insurances, for anybody that's recently had an insurance renewal, I'm sure they've come through a significant uplift, exactly the same for local authorities. And we have some government grants that are no longer feeding through and council tax cost costs. So in terms of the efficiencies required for the council, they are significant, we can't underestimate that. The budget efficiency requirement has been split into two components. First component being a generic budget efficiency requirement of 974,000, the second seeking to identify the IDB funding requirement over the past couple of years. Now, that does not go back as far as 21/22, which I just referred to, so between 21/22 and 24/25, the increase is circa 800,000 for Boston. But just looking at the past couple of years, we've pulled out that figure on purpose and I've done that across all three authorities to make it very clear to the government that you have no funding support for that 659,000. So effectively, you've got to embed another savings target within your budget in order to try and find that money to fund that uplift. And that's part of that compelling narrative we've got going on with government at the moment. And just to set that in context, you are one of the most worst affected councils in the country on this. So the top three are South Holland, East Lindsay and Boston, with Kingston, West Norfolk and then Fennland. So in terms of bridging that gap, we have been doing a huge amount of work in the background, looking at all the things we just mentioned, and that work will crystallise in your final budget. I don't want to tell you what the revised budget is because that's still being worked on, but it is a significantly improved position from as we see it then. Some of this is to do with the fact we're waiting for the Nndr one and we need that to finalise because that could be a significant improvement as a result of the government feeding in the CPI uplift. So we need to wait for all of that to land, to finalise for the final budget. However, we will still need to be finding efficiencies. Now, just to, so those of you who, sometimes this table gets misread and I have to say sometimes the press misread it as well, you do not add them together, so they do not accumulate up. If you were to save two million pounds, next year would be 274,000. So it's, each year is sat on its own effectively. So never accumulate, always check whether or not you should be accumulating the figures or not. So we'll be seeking to eat into your efficiencies requirements significantly for this year, and I currently have savings plans that will bridge that gap and that are being considered internally, and you will see some of that improvement for your final budget. But there's no doubt that what we want to prevent is moving from cliff edge to cliff edge, as I would consider it. And some of that cliff edge for five six is a result of the fact you are a cash rich authority and your investment income, income will be dropping. And that will be dropping because of dropping balances, because we're making use of some of that finance capital expenditure, but also in terms of interest rates. So we've been benefiting from quite a positive position and a lot of authorities are in exactly the same position, that the investment income has helped them during this period to balance their budgets effectively, but as that investment income rate starts to drop off, that pain effectively starts to feed into the budget. So we need to be working on five six now. A little bit more detail over those efficiencies, business rates, investment income, housing benefits, partnership recharges, fees and charges, also looking at housing incomes and various fees and charges around that. We have a programme of service reviews underway and we're starting to see some initial views as to what the efficiency opportunities might be from those. Capitalisation of salaries, because you have a lot of capital projects going on, looking at operating models, the waste vehicle wash, we've had to move into a contract this year that's been quite costly, can we in-source that? Looking at CCTV, the recharges, transformation plan, commercialisation, you know, can we modernise, commercialise, vacancy management, planning services, sharing of services and cost support from grants. So twenty five six I've already mentioned, key impacts in investment income, further pay pressures, contract pressures, no doubt further IDB increases. And again, just to set that in context, with all the wet weather events that have been taking place, IDBs, reserves have been depleted and they tend to use the levy to come, you know, to return their reserves back to manageable levels so that they can cope with wet weather events. So the more wet weather events you have, the more the reserves are depleted and therefore they need to top them up. And obviously, Boston Leisure Project, that's the capital cost pressures feeding through. So in terms of your reserves, you have a reasonable level of reserves, however, there is a lot of pressure in the system. So it's a reasonable and positive place to be, but we need to manage carefully use of reserves going forward and use them effectively. So areas still to be finalised, I'm just reassuring you, I'm almost there. IDBs are still finalising and I have heard that some IDV, IDBs as a result of the wet weather have moved up their percentage requirement from authorities. I heard recently last week from five per cent to 16 per cent, that's not in this area, that is in another area, it's been particularly affected by wet weather. Nndr one, that is critical, that's your business rate income, your final settlement, although I doubt that will move much now, we've had a further announcement of cash, savings and efficiencies work and then your final budget. Just some constitutional changes will be feeding through. We're going to be seeking to align constitutional limits across all three. You already are there in terms of the highest on some of them, so we'll be seeking to bring the other two up. And there's also one that I have at South Holland that would be handy to have in the other two, and that is if we suddenly get given grants, it just means we can get the money out the door quite quickly if there's an ability for me to incorporate it into the budget. So Household Support Fund is a really good example of that, where literally the government might say, here's another 600,000 pounds, can you get it out the door? That would actually need to go to full council, so as it sits currently. So not given a lot of choice in what you've got to do, you literally got to receive the money and then passport it out the door, it would enable me to add it to the budget quite quickly. Also, there's a proposal to include an annual RPI uplift for all fees and charges where applicable. So here's your timeline, we're on the 29th of January, ANG, a public consultation started after Cabinet. Later this week, we've got Corporate and Community Committee, then we're going into Cabinet briefing, consultation, Cabinet on the 21st and then Full Council on the 4th of March. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have and I will stop sharing.
Yes, Ross Tim.
Thank you, Chair. It's very good news, of course, that we're getting a government help with our IDV problem, but it's bad news that the sum involved that's been allocated publicly is only, is it three million? Now, divided by 29 councils, that is, looks like a paltry sum per council. I hope, I would imagine that Boston is one of the worst affected councils of the 29, so I hope great pressure will be put on government to make sure that we get a very big slice of that figure. But what's your comment?
I've been in contact with Deloitte throughout this period and I've been regularly sending them updates from the IDBs as to what the uplifts are that are anticipated, you know, all the way through the settlement development process. And I also submitted that as part of the representations for the settlement, draft settlement itself. I can't predict what they're going to allocate, they tend to use analysts to work through the data to arrive at the sums that are then shared out, and that's certainly how they did it last year. But we will certainly, you know, I've made it clear to them what the pressure is and the extent of that pressure.
Satisfied? Councillor Cantwell, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask on the fees and charges income budgets on page 29, table seven, the income from planning fees. I was hoping you could collaborate because my view is there have been a number of planning committee meetings which have been cancelled due to not having the applications. Now, I appreciate this is subject to review, but how confident are you in a figure of six, four, five for those planning fees?
And that's a really good question. You may or may not be aware, there were significant hikes on planning fees on the first of December that the government implemented by as much as 25 and 35 per cent, depending on the fee levels. So whilst volumes may have significantly reduced, the fees have significantly increased. So what I'm doing is I'm working with the service at the moment to try and establish what the volumes are. What we've seen is not as many large applications, but still smaller applications are still progressing in the background. Now, they're not the ones you'd see at committee, they're ones that are just sort of processed in the background. Also, as is ever the case with planning, one large application can swing the budget one way or the other. So it's, it is a really tricky one. I'd say it's a risk area for next year, but it's one that I'm working with the assistant director on.
Thank you very much. If I may just go on further, you, you mentioned there's a number of efficiencies which the council needs to identify. I think it'd be good on record, would any of these efficiencies result in cutting of frontline services and should the committee be concerned about that at all?
It's more about trying to run frontline services more efficiently and trying to make sure we procure as well as possible. There are no cuts to frontline services that are proposed, it's more about trying to share across the partnership. So for example, if we need a particular sort of expertise, and I can think of one in particular, we might be buying someone in at the moment to do it at, at high cost when actually we could procure it from one of our partner authorities much more cheaply.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Middleton.
Just to touch on your thing about planning there, just because we haven't had any committee meetings, that just means that we haven't had anything called in to go before the committee. The officers are still passing through planning applications with, under their own powers. So it doesn't mean that things have dropped particularly, but the other side of that coin is that a lot of the large developments have now stopped building. There's no doubt about that, the purchasers, the sales are down and therefore they might have 20 houses built, ready to sell, but they've stopped progressing the development and we might see and get hurt by that next year. But at the moment, it's not, not such a problem because planning is still going on through the officers' delegated powers.
Councillor Gilbert.
Yeah, I think it's really interesting, I tend to take the sort of the helicopter approach to a lot of this sort of thing because I, I'm not very good with the detail. But it's a very interesting trading picture for the borough really, over the next few years. I'm just drawn to the, the retained business rates, which seem to show a decline in 2024/25, but then seem to show an increase from then on. I mean, is that something which you're confident is likely to actually be the case, given some of the other issues that there are with our local economic fortunes, should we say? Uh, issues that there are with our local, um, economic fortunes, should we say.
Um, looking at that figure is really, um, tricky because there's so much, if I was to show you the spreadsheet that sat behind it, it probably runs to about forty lines of. Varying degrees of complexity. Um, also in the business rate, in that. Business rates line is hidden surfaces and deficits. So you, it literally has peaks and troughs that you're constantly trying to manage. So trying to do that helicopter on that line is probably one of the trickiest things you could possibly try and do because of all those moving parts within it. So a moving part could be a very large appeal. For example, if a large appeal hits, it can really draw you down one year, but then it bounces back up the following year. Within, within it, we have provisions and allowances. If any of those shift substantially, as my colleagues in that corner will know, they'll, it will heavily affect that figure. Probably the biggest shift has been the application of CPI to this. Um, and that's literally what's being worked through at the moment by the team. Um, and they'll be meeting with some external experts tomorrow to try and get some verification on that. Before we put it into the budgets because it is so significant.
Castle Gleeson.
Uh, thank you Chair. Um, kind of funny the report, it's a bit big. Um, how are our council tax and NNDR collection rates compared to other authorities? How they come back after Covid? And there was some mention of court costs.
So in terms of, um, council tax collection rates, I haven't got the benchmarking data in front of me, that does go to, um. As part of your performance reporting, so that will be available elsewhere. We're not, um, I would say post-Covid, it has been tricky. Um, again, on business rates, we're probably, um. Seeing perhaps some smaller units where, you know, insolvencies and things like that. But again, a lot of the smaller units don't pay business rates, might get small business rate relief or they had a lot of relief during Covid. So I think we're seeing bits and pieces feeding through, but nothing substantial. Um. In terms of council tax, I'd say probably what's more significant is the uptake of the council tax support scheme, where there has been a marked uptake on it. Um, and that's something that has actually eroded your council tax yield for four or five as a result. So there are, there are trends in the background, but because you're in quite a large population, they don't show through probably as strongly. As you might perceive them to. So in terms of court costs, that was actually in a mission from the budget for last year.
You know, just ask your counsel Gleeson to put your microphone rot, rather than pointing to the ceiling so we can hear you, right? Otherwise, we're not, thank you.
Castle Middleton, please come back.
Castle Middleton.
Uh, just on, uh, business rates, um. What happens if we were to get a company, and I'm not naming any names, uh, in Boston that, uh, repeatedly ran up. Uh, a business rates bill shuts a company down. And we finish up not collecting any rates, although they've operated perhaps for six months or whatever. If they repeatedly do that, is there some way that we can get the individual or do we just have to let him keep opening businesses? Or, or she to keep opening businesses and not paying business rates? Is there any mechanism to stop that?
You have a very capable team who are, um, managing your business rate debt. Um, and they would be speaking to me about things like, um, insolvency action and such matters as that. If that was something that they felt was necessary at a particular time. So what, you know, they are. The aim is to make sure business rates is coming out of these properties. And that we're taking whatever necessary is required in order to enable that to happen. So I can't comment on any particular circumstances, but all I would say is your debt is being very proactively managed.
Castle Danny, yeah, yeah.
You want to come first, Castle Gleeson?
No, you go first, go on.
Thank you. I, I, I mean, I thank you and I do appreciate what you are doing and I sympathise with you in the same time because, you know, the things will not get easy. As we all know that there is, you know, the, the things what's happening in the Middle East, the Red Sea. Uh, I'm pretty sure that BP will halt all their travelling through the Red Sea, so they're going to take the long route, so which is, I, I think it will add cost of over a million to each. Uh, travelling and then I think things will get difficult. Because I think Tesco as well, they announced that they're going to increase some of the prices. So the hardship is coming and I think, uh. Especially talking about, uh, Citizens Army again and, and, and all of these, it, it doesn't create the situation, the, the, the right situation for the finance in, in the country to be balanced. And also I know the IDB, the increase of eight hundred thousand, I think in my opinion, the government should pay that, we shouldn't pay for these things. Uh, the only thing what I picked on your speech, you, you said that, um. You will look at other options and I would like to know what kind of option you will look at. The, I, I, I'm, you know, probably one of the, the options is not to sacrifice any of our services. Thank you.
So there are always options. So you can always have a service but provide it differently. So, you know, you can use, um. Uh, you could stretch yourself differently, you could have different opening hours, you could be looking for, um. Uh, for example, looking at how we're working with P S P S, so you try and get rid of demand. So if you're taking a lot of phone calls on something, can we put more information on the internet? Can we make sure it's, um. It's a fully integrated service into the back office, so you're not having to handle it, it's all automatic. Starting to use things like, um, automatic processing of requests. All of those are things that we ought to be doing anyway in terms of modernising our services, because to be honest, that's probably what our customers want. They wanted to be do, able to do it anytime on their phone and instantaneously. So it's about, some of this is about modernisation. Some of it is about transformation, how can we transform something? And another bits are looking at how can we do it differently? And in doing that differently, you're trying, constantly trying to make it more efficient and trying to procure it as well, as smart as you possibly can. You've already seen quite a few savings by us, for example, doing IT across all three. The IT bills across all three are absolutely astronomical. You know what I mean? But, you know, to run a council of all of its IT, if we could share some of those systems and we're looking at a system at the moment, which we might be able to share. Across all three, the savings will be significant. So there's lots of things you can do as a result of being in this partnership. That are almost a gift in terms of that efficiency opportunity and we need to be maximising that.
Thank you. Can I ask a question? Um, can you just tell me about the leisure contractor? I mean, obviously we're on the leisure services ourselves and I don't know, we're, was the relevant a lot, I would imagine, or we were constantly propping them up. Um, the new contractor, are we in any way subsidising them if they're not making it work? Or are they paying us any profit share if, if they make excessive profits out of it? I'm just curious to know what sort of deal we've got, because, because on that, um, on your, on your presentation, obviously. From now on, there's a new contractor in there taking all the revenue and looking after the, uh, the centre. What, what sort of arrangement have we got besides nothing from the income?
From a revenue position, it's an improved revenue position under that arrangement and it's also open book. So we have an open book arrangement for the first few years and then. Yeah, my understanding is we're looking at a longer term arrangement. What I would say to you with leisure is longer term arrangements tend to give you better value. Because of where we are with the asset, the decision was made to go short term, but open book makes that a very effective type of, uh, relationship.
Okay, I've got a question here from, um, our independent person who's not here this evening, but sent me a, an email with it on, so I'll just go to it, Christine, with you. Budget cover papers, paragraph eight point two says the efficiency and transformation plans are being put together for members' consideration. Um, while the budget report, paragraph five point two says that plans are already underway to meet the nine hundred and seventy four K efficiency target. Not entirely consistent, so it's right to assume in line with this report. That we have clear plans in place and action underway to meet the nine seventy four K efficiency target. And is it plans for the subsequent, subsequent years, uh, for twenty five, twenty six, they are currently being put together for our review?
So the, uh, plan for four, five is, exists. Um, and I've been discussing it with the finance portfolio holder and the leader, so that exists. In terms of five, six, that's something we'll be looking to do. Uh, and what I am doing is looking at where those service reviews are planned to come up. We've got a large programme of service reviews that are planned. At the moment, we've only factored in a few, we've got quite a few idea, other ideas where we've not fully fleshed them out, but we're talking about five, six now rather than four, five. So, so those plans are detailed, um, and we need to work through them and SLT, who are the senior leadership team. Have oversight of all of those plans on a regular basis.
Another question from her is budget report table one shows the F T reduced by fourteen, just under six percent. Over a three-year period, how many of these are through transfers, E G, G M L C? And how many are assumed to be part of the efficiency plans?
There's none assumed to be as part of the efficiency plans, they're all G M L C as far as I'm aware, or there might be grant funding falling out as well.
Okay, thank you. Um, Castle Gilbert?
Yeah, my final question I think is going to be, uh, in respect of, um, the budget pressures that have been identified. One of which is the increased demand for homelessness support and its associated costs. Um, I, I was always under the impression that most homelessness support was, um. Recompensed by central government, um, and clearly that's not the case. Uh, there are things which fall directly to the borough to cover financially. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking, i- is there a trend associated with this? Um, in terms of a year-on-year increase in the amount of, um, homeless support that the borough, uh, is responsible for. Um, and, um, to what extent is it a significant, uh, pressure on the budget? Because it's clearly identified as a key budget pressure, but to what extent is that, um, a, a reality that's going to, you know, raise its head at some point in the future?
It's quite a complex area because again, there's, uh, many moving parts within it. One of the moving parts is subsidy calculation. In that if you have someone within bed and breakfast, for example, you might be paying eighty pounds a night, but you're only getting subsidy of say twelve pounds a night. So effectively for every night they're in bed and breakfast, you have a cost. Also on top of that, in certain circumstances, um, you may have a landlord who's not a registered social landlord. And they provide services and we cannot get subsidy on those services. Um, so again, it's quite a complex environment whereby we're, we're trying to work with parties to see what we can do to mitigate that cost. But on top of that, you also need to proactively manage your throughput. So you need to man, you know, you need to prevent homelessness. We need to, when somebody is homeless, try and get them into secure accommodation as soon as we possibly can. You know, a holding down a tenancy rather than reliance on bed and breakfast, which we tend to seek to minimise. By using things, other property types. But then in some of those circumstances, even though we may be working with a landlord, some of their costs may not come back. That is something where probably we need to be looking, um, to a solution from government. Because some of this is the way the subsidy calculation is done. It's, so it's a really. The, the landlords have no intention of becoming registered social landlords, they have no plans to. We can have those conversations with them. So as long as that exists as a problem, we will never get that finance back. And if they grow their offer, your bill goes with it. So what we need to be doing is lobbying government to say, these are people who are. Providing that sort of accommodation and we need to be getting the subsidy on it. So it's not dissimilar to what we've been doing on IDBs and other areas. I think we need to be making the same representations on subsidy.
Ask about trends over the, say, four, five-year period.
The trend is upwards.
Good, Castle Austin?
Thank you. Um, can I just, uh, focus on the disability for some, the, um, disability facilities grant? It's a, a growing, seems to be a growing figure each year, um, and I'm always concerned about it because. The decision-making on how the money is spent is, seems to be in the hands of the county, not in the hands of, uh, the, uh, ourselves. Um, what is the risk involved? I mean, and when there's an underspend, do we get the money back in our reserves? Or, and when there's a, an overspend, uh, uh, that is when I get worried. Can, I think new members of the committee may not be too familiar with the disability for grant and, uh. Perhaps, uh, a little explanation would be justified.
So de- disabled facilities grants is fully, um, grant funded. Um, and if anything, we're starting to see even more, um, funding pumped through this route, through the Better Care Fund. Where county council are actually grant funding us and might, and we might be working with East Lindsay around providing more enhanced services around this area. I'd say it's an area not necessarily of underspend but of overspend. It's an, uh, of overspend but underspend. What we try to do is actually overprogram it, so we try and get more out the door. But trying to process them through the system can take quite a lot of time because of the specialisms that are required. So it's not an area I'm particularly concerned about, it's more about trying to get the throughput through it. And we do get a substantial amount of grant to support that.
But you're not worried about it in particular. Oh, that's, that's comforting. Uh, can I just al- also raise another issue while I'm, uh, on the floor as it were? Uh, I see that, uh, the Guildhall is under scrutiny. Uh, I would appeal that, well, my, my feeling is that as, uh, a corporate priority of this council. Uh, is to make sure that the economy, um, of the, uh. Uh, o- 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 of the visitor economy increases. And I always feel that the, uh, Guildhall could be really driving and at the heart of this expansion. And it worries me that, uh, we're penny pinching on the Guildhall and not looking at the bigger picture. Uh, for the importance of so many people out there who are involved with the visitor economy. But, uh, I, I, I may, I just make this point, uh, Mr. Jim.
I think again, with any assets, it's about using them as effectively as possible.
Right, Councilor Cantwell.
Just a quick one for me, um, and it's disappointing that the portfolio holder couldn't be here tonight to answer. Um, but there's nowhere in the foreword, uh, that says what the underlying needs of our residents was with this budget. And I was hoping you could just expand, uh, on, on what you, what you were forecasting are the needs of our residents are. Um, just so we can show that we, they are at the centre of this budget.
Um, it's about supporting the most vulnerable in the community. It's also about driving growth and providing the services they require. So you, you definitely have a, uh, budget for growth in terms of your capital programme. It's a significant capital programme. It's a lot of activity in the area. Also working with, um, P S P S around things like your council tax support scheme, um, benefits, council, council tax. Um, support generally, uh, discretionary housing payments and such like. Where we are working with, um, working with the portfolio holder and the leader regarding, uh, potentially extra support. So I think it's, um, it is a budget that reflects the time, is that what you'd say, whilst alongside it with that grant funding that we've been successfully leveraging in. Trying to drive growth as well and improve the place.
Right, just a question from me, Christine. Um, I'm talking about external audit fees and PSP contract increases. There's a lot of big numbers here. Um, can you justify to this committee how you've arrived at those big numbers?
So we've used the latest, um, contract fee figures from PSAA and we've seen, um. Increases across audit, I think it's fair to say. I would say from my perspective, it's probably been underfunded in the past. Um, and also as a result of that, we've seen difficulty in recruitment within internal audit, just like we have seen in finance. I think there's been a lot of people. Decided to leave, um, that area of specialism. So we, you know, generally it's been problematic. So from my perspective, I'm not surprised increases are there. And they are required because I think we need a good and high standard of audit. For councils, especially in what are particularly trying times.
I clearly understand that and I can see where you're coming from, but if I was a member of the public sitting in that gallery and looking at those numbers there, I'd be wondering where all the money's going. And, you know, why are these increases so large? Um, at the end of the day, you know, um. If you're happy that we're satisfied that we're, those numbers are justifiable and we've gone through all the processes of keeping. The increases down to the, to the, uh, you know, the norm, um, you know, I'll take that, but. You know, you've got to bear in mind that people reading this, they're going to start wondering where all these figures are, you know, what are we doing? Are we just giving money away?
These are nationally set contracts, um, and we were involved in that procurement, um, and those, um. Those contracts were bid for by the audit companies and they are the resulting fees.
Thank you. I noted that, thank, thank you very much. Right, just have a couple more questions, we're going to move on because we've got a big agenda and we don't want to be sitting eight till ten o'clock at night.
I'll be very brief. Thank you. I just want to know how much we have in our reserve today. Yes.
Page um thirty six, you'll see your totals there of circa eleven million. But remember that does exclude the, um, oh, it does include the general reserve, so about eleven million.
Right, um, I think we've got all the questions answered. One of the things that we discussed before this meeting, I just want to raise it with you, was about the reporting. I don't know whether, we, I'll share this with you now at this point. We, we, the the committee members here around this table think that the information here is a lot of it's duplicated or quite a thing, a lot of things duplicated. And we think the reporting should be a little bit more tighter. Because you're reading two or three hundred pages of stuff and you keep repeating things in the, in the report. And I'm just wondering really whether we could have a little bit more numbers and information to do with, you know, key messages, executive summary, you know, and a low sort of audit report or anything that's really fixed into the point, I think. Because you're reading all this stuff and we discussed it, there's about three hundred pages of stuff here. And you you can see a lot of duplication that keeps reappearing. And we've said that uh as a, as a, as a group this evening. Can we look at near reporting and making it a bit more, a bit more tighter?
And that's a little bit tricky because it has a standard form to it in terms of what we are statutorily, if you like, required to produce. And to a certain degree, that's why we produce the PowerPoint to lift that high level up. Obviously, the report, the covering report is like an exec summary, should aim to be an executive summary with the main salient features within it. But the PowerPoint provides a bit more meat um to go with that. So it sits in between a high level report and the summary and the detail itself. I'd find it very difficult to contract the detail because of everything that we have to have in it. So um, we could circulate the PowerPoint with the papers when it went out as perhaps something to sit in the middle. Happy to take suggestions.
I think, I think from our point of view, uh, you know, you've got two big sets of paperwork here, which is about three hundred pages, nearly two hundred and fifty something pages. To try and digest all that in, in, you know, then come to a meeting to understand it all, um, is a bit heavy. But I think we've all felt that, you know, some people are not sure what they're reading. You get to the end of it, you forgot what you read. And, you know, as much as I can understand this as a budget one, and it's quite obviously an important meeting and there's a lot of stuff going through the, through the committee this evening. I just wonder, you know, sometimes whether we could make it more simpler, more easy to follow. Because I I think people are struggling with the information in here to try and digest it all. And and please take this in the spirit it's meant.
Absolutely, I do. And I think the more familiar you become with it, you'll find it easier. You will find it easier. I promise.
We hope. We hope we do. Right, are there any more questions for Christine on on her report before we move on? No? So we've had all the questions we want. Thank you very much, Christine, for that very robust and in depth and uh interesting report. And and thank you for, for, you know, for answering all the questions for us. Let's go on to um item two, that's on the agenda. It's the Treasury Management Policy and Draft Treasury Management Strategy Statement Minute. Oh, I beg your pardon, I'm getting carried away here. Apologies, Paul. It's been a long day. I've been here a long time. Can I just take it everybody wants to accept the report from Christine, um, from the questions that we've asked? Everybody in favour of that? I'll take it, yeah, well, love us. Proposed it. Are you going to propose it? And you're seconded. So we've got proposed and seconded. Sorry, I've, I've, I've been here since two o'clock and I'm not, I'm actually frizzled. Um, so I'll be happy with that. Everybody, everybody all in favour? Lovely. Paul, you're always picking me up on these things. I get carried away. I'm so passionate and get, you know, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Right, can we go on to item two then? Yes? Right, let's get over to um Shaun, it's over to you.
Thank you very much. Uh, yeah, the item before you here is the uh, the treasury management policy and the draft treasury strategy for two thousand and twenty four, twenty five, which includes the minimum revenue provision policy and the annual investment strategy for two thousand and twenty four, twenty five. This is at draft stage at the moment because if there are any changes to things like your capital program, investment income forecasts, et cetera. Uh, what we will have to do is we will have to replicate those changes that go through your budget setting report uh into these, this report as well. So they, so the old figures tie up. Um, so uh, the council has to, has to produce a treasury management strategy ahead of the financial year. Um, and that has to be approved by council. At page fifty three, you'll see the council's treasury management policy. Uh, there are no changes to this document and it's here for completeness. Uh, so I propose to go to the draft strategy, which starts on page fifty five and the back, and the background information at the top of page fifty six. The council is required to operate a balanced revenue budget, which broadly means that cash raised during the year will meet cash expenditure. Part of the treasury manager operation is to ensure that this cash flow is adequately planned, with cash being available when it is needed. Surplus monies are invested in low risk counterparties or instruments commensurate with the council's low risk appetite. Providing adequate liquidity initially before considering investment returns. The strategy pulls together all the council's capital plans, financing, borrowing, how we manage risk, the types of investments their council is prepared to make, limits, et cetera. Paragraph one point, two point two on page fifty seven, uh, this details the treasury management reporting requirements. The council is required to produce prudential and treasury indicators and a treasury strategy, and that's this report. It's also required to produce a mid-year treasury management report, uh, which goes to audit and governance and follows on to cabinet and council. Uh, and also an annual treasury report at the end of the financial year. All those reports will end up um going to council. Um, and also audit and governance is responsible for the scrutiny of all treasury reports and that has been delegated by full council. Since two thousand and twenty three, twenty four financial year, quarterly reports have been required. Uh, but these are only required to go to the Audit and Governance Committee. Paragraph one point three refers to the treasury management strategy for two thousand and twenty four, five. And it all shows, it shows there the items that are covered within that strategy, mainly the capital issues uh and the treasury management issues. Paragraph one point four refers to training. Uh, the responsible officer is in, is required to ensure that members with responsibility for treasury management receive adequate training in treasury management where required. Section two refers to the capital prudential indicators, two thousand and twenty three, twenty four through to two thousand and twenty eight, twenty nine. And you'll uh see that the table on page sixty um replicates the table that you've already seen in the budget report. Which shows that the council's got plans in twenty four, twenty five for capital expenditure of seven point six million pounds. Of which seven points, just under seven point four million pounds of that is funded, giving a borrowing requirement of two hundred and fifty thousand pounds. These capital expenditure plans merit, that mirror the bonds in the budget and will be amended throughout the year as spending plans change. Page sixty one, the table on that, table sixty one refers to what's known as the council's C F R. Uh, that's the capital financing requirement. Uh, this is the council's undeniying need to borrow for historic capital expenditure and future unfinanced capital expenditure. And you'll see the forecast for two thousand and twenty four, twenty five is that the council's C F R will be just over eighteen million pounds. Which is a movement in year, uh, an increase of a hundred and sixty thousand pounds. Uh, there is a requirement, um, there is a change going to be made to this table before it actually appears in council or during the following financial year. Uh, this is due to the change in how leases are accounted for. They are going to be, go it from the first of April, leases are required to go on the balance sheet. Uh, and as there is a liability, a future liability which is unfinanced, uh, the implications of those financed leases will be that they will increase the council's C F R. Um, so as and when that exercise is completed and valuations, uh, values are um established. Uh, the council's capital financing requirement figures will change, but that will be reported in due course. Paragraph two point five refers to the minimum revenue provision policy. Uh, in December two thousand and twenty three, uh revised guidance was issued by government um in relation to minimum revenue provision policy and what it deems to be a prudent um M R P policy and prudent M R P charges. Uh, this guidance is currently out to consultation. That consultation is due to be completed in February. Uh, and then once that legislation is released on to the statute book. Um, we will be reviewing the council's minimum revenue provision policy uh for unfinanced capital expenditure to ensure that our prudent um revenue charge meets the requirements of the revised guidance. One change that we are adding in there is to add, uh, as a basis of calculating the prudent provision. Uh, we are adding the asset life method um on an annuity basis rather than just a straight line basis. Paragraph three point one refers to the council's current portfolio position uh at the thirty first of March and at the thirty first of December, two thousand and twenty three. So you'll see in the column for current thirty first of the twelfth, twenty three, the council had investments managed internally of just under twenty eight million pounds. Um, property fund investments managed externally at just under eighteen million pounds at cost. Giving a total treasury investments of just under forty six million pounds. Uh, the borrowing position is the council now has one million pounds worth of external borrowing. Giving an overall net treasury position of forty four point seven one oh million pounds worth of investments. The table on the bottom of page sixty four uh refers to uh the council's capital financing requirement and the exact amount of debt. Um, what the purpose of this table is, we must ensure that external borrowing doesn't exceed the council's capital financing requirement. And you'll see there that the council is comfortably within that limit with external borrowing of one million pounds and a C F R of uh for two thousand and twenty four, twenty five of eighteen million pounds. So we are, based on the forecast, uh, there is an under borrowed position of seventeen million pounds. The council is required to set treasury limits uh in relation to borrowing. And there is an operational boundary limit, which previously was twenty two million pounds for debt and other long term liabilities of three million pounds. And following the debt redemption exercise, um, the proposed forecast for uh limit for operational boundary for debt is being reduced to ten million pounds. Uh, and other liability, long term liabilities is being increased from three million pounds to five million pounds. Uh, to allow a little bit of headroom um for the exercise in relation to leases. If there is, um, if, if the lease values are significantly low, those, lower than those figures. Then it's likely that these limits will be reduced back down to the original levels. And we also have to set what's known as an authorized limit. Uh, the reductions in the authorized limit replicate the ones in relation to the operational boundary limit. Um, but you'll see that the actual limit overall is three million pounds higher. And that is effectively to allow us for contingencies for unexpected expenditure. Paragraph three point three refers to the council, the prospects for interest rates. These have been provided by Link Group or are the council's external treasurer advisors. And at the time this report was produced, uh, the table there shows that the forecast for investment returns. The bank rate, um, in their opinion, has peaked at five point two five percent. And their forecast was that the first reduction in rates would be within quarter ending in September twenty four. Since this has been reproduced, uh, their forecast has changed. Uh, and effectively what's happened in their revised forecast is they are now predicting that the first reduction in rates will be in June twenty, quarter end in June twenty four. But that will be um brought forward as part of the changes in the um next draft of this document. Link Group's forecast uh in relation to borrowing and investment rates is shown on page sixty eight and sixty nine uh for reference. Uh, and the council's borrowing strategy, uh, the council only has one million pounds of external borrowing. Uh, and it has a porous, it's currently maintaining a policy of being under borrowed and financing from internal cash balances. Policy on borrowing in advance of need, paragraph three point five, um is confirming that the council will not borrow more than or in advance of its need purely in order to profit from the investment of the extra sums borrowed. Uh, because that would be contrary to uh legislation. Uh, but what the council does review is its unfinanced capital requirement going forward. And whether there's any benefit in taking the funding, uh, external borrowing or future capital expenditure as part of its medium, medium term financial strategy. The annual investment strategy at section four, uh, this basically sets how you manage your risk relating to investments. And I can confirm that there are no significant changes proposed to the previous year's um criteria. Um, because we feel as though this criteria has served as well in the past. Uh, but it's controlled, uh, sit for places a high priority on the management of risk. This council has adopted a prudent approach to managing risk and defines its risk approach uh appetite by the following means. By looking at minimum acceptable credit criteria, reviewing credit default swap prices, that's the cost of ensuring against certain financial institutions defaulting. And monitoring those prices for early warning signs. Um, it sets types of investment instruments that the council is happy for the council to invest in. And they are at appendix five point three, and they are split between specified investments, those being of less than one year in term or simple, uh, to understand. Or non specified investments whereby they may be less than one years but complicated or where the valuations of those investments may fluctuate. Um, and that any investment that is longer than three hundred and sixty four days is classified as a non specified investment as well. Um, the total amount limit for non specified investment by the council is set at five million pounds. And there are lending limits to individual counterparties, uh, financial institutions or parents groups of five million pounds. So the parent group being an important one there. So if we take Lloyds Bank, Halifax Bank, for example, we couldn't invest five million pounds with Halifax Bank and five million pounds with Lloyds Bank because they are all part of the same group. So it would be a maximum for that group. Uh, there is a limit of seven and a half million pounds uh with the C C I money market fund. Uh, that is required to ensure that we've got sufficient um facilities short term to meet the day to day um preset payments, et cetera, which can come to quite large sums of money which tend to all fall on the same day. So that can be anywhere between seven and a half and ten million pounds. And there's no limit for deposits with the UK Debt Management Agency Deposit Facility. Because that is effectively lending the funds to the UK government until such time as they're required. Uh, we also have limits set in relation to sovereign ratings. Um, there is a list of countries um at the end of the document which sets the countries where we are prepared to invest with banks from those individual sovereign countries. Um, and also the final one is that all investments will be denominated in sterling. We don't make any foreign, foreign currency investments. Investment return expectations in paragraph four point four. Uh, the current forecast shown in paragraph three point three included a forecast for bank rate to have peaked at five point two five percent. And these have been built into our investment forecasts for uh the next financial year, investment returns. And you'll see there the table of their forecast for investment returns over the next six to ten, sorry, anywhere up to the next six to ten years. Uh, and the meet for the term of the medium term financial strategy. So um, the rest of the year, five point three percent, and next financial year, they're estimating four point seven percent. If we just quickly go to the appendices, paragraph appendix five point two uh provides you the um sorry, I've missed one. Uh, appendix five point one uh refers to the prudential indicators which the council is required to set. And they are a summary of what's been discussed um previously in, within the document. And also it has to set what's known as the um financing costs as a proportion of net revenue stream. Um, so basically you'll see that that figure is negative um due to the fact that the council receives more income from investments than it does in, in relation to borrowing costs. So that figure is a negative figure. And then finally, you've got the list of the countries whereby the, that meet the sovereign criteria. Uh, and also the details, the tables that provide details of the investment interests that fall in specified investments, non specified. The only change that there is um in relation to the non specified investments, um, on page eighty five is in relation to the uh deposits with UK local authorities. Um, that had previously been set at two years, uh, but we have proposed to extend that up to five years. Um, due to the forecast for interest rate environment being a gradual reduction in rates. And if we do see the opportunity to make a longer term investment there at a higher rate, it would secure the council, help secure the council's future investment returns. Uh, but that would obviously be in consultation with the council's section one, five, one officer. Um, that concludes my report. Uh, the recommendation is that the Audit and Governance Committee scrutinize the treasury management policy at appendix A and the treasury management strategy statement, minimum revenue provision policy statement and annual investment strategy at appendix B. And make any comments to cabinet and council uh when this report goes as an appendix to the budget setting report. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaun. As always, you give a um, a great detailed report and I always feel very sort of comfortable when you've finished because it sort of satisfies everybody and I really do appreciate what you've done there. So I've got a question for you here from our independent um member.
Yep.
Uh, treasury report, paragraph four point five says Treasury Report, paragraph four point five says, she says, is the council decision not to undertake investment risk benchmarking in line with best practice and or practice undertaken by other councils? Four point five of the Treasury Report, paragraph four five.
Yeah, in relation to that, what the council has in the past done. It monitors the investment rates, returns that are available in the market. It regularly receives information from the external treasurer advisors. They are aware of what our investment portfolios are, our debt portfolios, et cetera. And in the past, they've always said our returns and performance has been better than average in comparison with other local authorities. But we've kept, in the past, we've always made the view that the investment risk benchmark, we're happy to go with the three month sterling overnight index rate because the council's got quite a lot of funds held short term. But particularly this council, it also has funds that it can make available long term and invest for up to one year. So when you take into account the fact that you've got funds short term, funds long term. We feel as though the three month investment rate is a good benchmark to go with. But if that, if the council wishes to change that or review that, then obviously there it is within their remit to do so.
Just asking the question.
Yeah.
I'll go to Christine, I'll come back to Paul in a moment.
And that is the benchmark we're fed to using. So we are benchmarking practically all the time in terms of that information that's provided to us by our external experts. And it is quite a challenging target as well because you're sort of chasing it when it's upwards. So it is something that provides us something to aim for.
Yeah, certainly. It's a, it's been a target in a rapid interest rate environment, whereas the interest rates are rising very quickly. It is very difficult when you've got investments lent out for three, six, nine, twelve months, you tend to lag behind that benchmark. But then once your interest rate environment starts to fall and you've got those long term investments made over varying durations, you'll find that you are ahead of the game and slowly you'll drop down to the benchmark again when interest rates flatten out again.
Sean, I'm always happy when you've got your finger on that button and it sounds like you certainly have for your report this evening. I really am. I thank you for that. Counselor Gleeson.
Thank you, Chair. Point the speaker thing at me. Yeah, I like these reports. They make sense, which is a novelty. So I've just got one thing. Sorry, mine's not paged because I'm on the thing here, but it five point five. Yep. I don't think we have an executive board.
So that's an executive board to a cabinet. We've just done that. All right, Sean, we'll let you off on that one. Don't worry, I'm not going to say anything. You did a very good job, so not bother about one more, but Counselor Gleeson is going to, and I like an eagle. Does he show you a red? Yes. Any other questions?
Just one simple question. How often do we review our, the rent for our assets?
It's not relevant to that report, but we review them in accordance with the rent view set out in the leases. So that's something that sits within the assets team. It is an area I'm picking up as part of the efficiency review.
Okay, just, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Gilbert?
Yeah, just a quick one. I mean, this, as ever, this report is very thorough, very readable. I was, I would draw the conclusion from what's written here that our appetite currently is cautious, but flexible, depending on the operating environment with which we're working. Who determines the appetite of the council for investments, whether they become risky or less risky and more cautious? How's that determined?
So council sets the strategy. That is as advised by our external advisors is against local government benchmarks. But ultimately, in terms of those day to day investments, I sit with myself. So they'll already have been tested a little by Sean. But it's again, sometimes about taking that global perspective in terms of what may or may not be happening internationally. But similarly, because of the change in the market starting to tick downwards, we're looking now to local authorities who tend to offer really good rates in the current environment. So we're sort of maneuvering within a cautious environment to play safely for as long as we can, for as high as we can, whilst making sure that cash comes back.
Now, Mr. Gleeson, Counselor Gleeson, let's not get, let's not get political. I hear what you say, but not for this meeting. Thank you. Any other questions? More than controversial. Any other questions? Right, okay, I think we're happy with that one then. Do you mind if we just take a few minutes, a three or four minutes break? Because I've been here since about three and I'm just about frazzled out. So do you mind if we just have a couple of minutes break? Anybody got a problem with that? Before we go on to the next item, just are we happy with Sean's report, all noted, recommended and everybody happy with it? All in favor? Well done. Thank you very much, Sean. Right, I'm going to take ten to come back. Go and get your drinks, go to the loo, what do you need to do? I just need to have a couple of minutes myself. All right, thank you. Right, next is item three on the tonight's agenda, and it's the approval of the financial statement. Twenty twenty one, which starts on page ninety on the agenda pack, I'm going to ask Sam and Nicole to go through that for us and present it to us, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. So the committee have before them the financial statements for the year ending thirty first of March twenty twenty two. As covered in the report, these statements are now substantially complete. The audit of these accounts is substantially complete and is ready for approval by the committee. The statements were previously considered by this committee in March last year. And due to changes in presentation of the council share of P S P S and also changes to the pension assumptions and valuations, material changes were made to the accounts, which is why they're being presented back to the committee tonight for final approval. This item is to approve the statements, but also to note that agenda items four and five are also in relation to the statement of accounts and is regarding the audit of those accounts. And Mark Sturridge from Mazars, your external auditors, is here to answer questions on the audit process. I also have Nicole Hayes here, the senior finance business partner, who can answer any questions on any of the technical matters within the statement of accounts if any member has any questions. But the recommendations for the committee are to approve the financial statements as detailed in Appendix A, to authorize the section one five one officer in consultation with the chairman of the committee to approve any amendments if required after the committee date and prior to the official signing of the accounts, to approve the annual governance statement, and also to note the letter of representation to Mazars from the council section one five one officer attached to Appendix B. Happy to take questions.
Thank you very much, Sam. Any questions? Counselor Gleeson.
Thank you. Obviously, this is all really sort of historic for us. We weren't councillors and so I mean, I'm quite happy that our officers have done the job they do have done. I understand, obviously, it was more through government helping out over the years that it's taken a while. And so, yeah, I'm happy just to move off the recommendations.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yeah, just a quick observation in, on page one O one, our borough. You know, we are very familiar with the history of Boston and I don't think we should necessarily see a reduction in that particular content there. But it does refer to challenges associated with the rapid increase of inward migration. And I just wonder whether it will be helpful to detail what some of those challenges are, because many of them we've discussed an earlier part of the agenda in terms of things like homelessness. We've also made reference on previous meetings to healthcare and that sort of thing. And actually, to capture that in there, I think, would be quite helpful. I'm not sure whether it fits the bill as far as this kind of report is concerned, but I certainly think it should be considered.
Are you asking a question?
Right. It was a question.
Okay.
I think the state, the question was, would it be possible for us to consider, including in the sort of paragraph, which is the third paragraph down under item three on page one O one, whether or not we could have a slightly more detailed breakdown of what the challenges are associated with the high level of inward migration into the borough. We did at one point complete a report on this. And we did identify a number of key themes which were a challenge to the borough. And I think it might be helpful just to put that in there.
Can I please clarify? That's for future statements rather than twenty one twenty two.
Not for this one.
I agree.
Counselor Gleeson.
Well, actually, that's what I was just going in to say. Whilst I don't disagree with what Counselor Gilbert says, I don't think we want to be fiddling with this one. And just as an aside, C and C actually are going to start a piece of work where we review the now ten year old report. So there will be some new work coming out.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Middleton.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, as I mentioned earlier on, I feel as though I've been through a first year of a degree course in finance going through this. Three or four days of my life lost, I think, this last couple of weeks. But one thing that stuck out for me was on page one six one, where we've paid four hundred and thirty some pounds to somebody. I presume through some process. Yeah. I'd just like to know that we followed a proper course of action there to arrive at that number. Because from the private sector, where I come from, that's amounts of money is something unheard of. Just interested to hear how we came up with that number. And is it a set of regulations we follow for local government as opposed to private sector?
Obviously, I couldn't comment on that as it's not one five one at that particular point in time. That's a historical fact that's been reported as part of the statement of accounts for that period. I will take that away.
I think it'd be interesting to know what it is because we, you know, we need to understand why that number's there and how we've arrived at it and what process it went through. And, you know, is that going to be, was the right sort of things in place to make sure that that was the right number to pay?
Yeah, I would further say, are we likely to be hit with that halfway through one of the next three years? I mean, is it something we should be budgeting for? I've no idea how that sort of number comes about. It's completely alien to me.
I think we should come back with a confidential note for members' consideration on how such figures are arrived at.
Okay, well, it's not only because that one, you've also got another couple of numbers underneath them as well, which is eight to five and thirty six, which is again, obviously compensation for loss of office. So, you know, there's a lot of money here at stake and I just think it's the committee. You know, you can come back at another time. I'm happy with that.
In terms of compensatory payments, no, you're not. So you're only exposed to something like that if you decide to take that course of action.
All right, well, you come back on that one. Counselor Gleeson.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this, though, is in the people's contract of employment. I mean, the redundant of employment. I mean, the redundancy payment is normally in the order of one and a half years salary for each year served. I mean, yeah, so it's quite easy. I mean, when I got mine, it went about a hundred and eighty, I think. So it does very quickly gets gets up there. Particularly, you know, if you get redundancy and get early retirement as well in it anyway.
Yeah, I just again, I'm thinking again, if anybody from the public picked this up and asked the question, that that it'd be interesting to know what the answer is. That was all. But anyway, Christine's going to find that out and let us know on a private note. Okay? Any other questions on the annual statement? Any other questions? I mean, you're happy with it, Paul. I hear from you what you're saying. Councillor Gilbert, you have anything to say?
What Paul has said, I think, as long as the process was followed as per employment law, I suspect that the figure that came out is the correct figure.
Right. So is everybody happy with the approval of the financial statement then for twenty one twenty two? Let's hope we're going to catch up with ourselves in the next in the next financial year, otherwise we'll be constantly talking backwards all the time. So can I now say that, can I have a proposal on the second please? All right, so councillor Gleeson's proposed it, but on the second. And councillor Anton Donnelly seconded. All in favour? Well, I'll take that as carried. Thank you very much. Move on. Item four on the agenda is the external audit annual report, which starts on page two one three. And I'm going to get Mark to present that to us. All right, Mark?
Thank you. If I just take you to page two hundred and twenty two. This report is one of our formal requirements. We have to issue it on or within three months of the date of which we plan to issue the opinion on the financial statements for the year ended thirty first of March two thousand and twenty two. So it simply coincides with that. Page two hundred and twenty two sets out the overall summary. Our responsibilities are to review the underlying arrangements, so policies, procedures that the council has to support financial sustainability. So that's things like budgetary control, governance, which includes risk management and medium term financial planning, and improving efficiency economy and effectiveness, which is your performance management arrangements. The report goes into detail about some of what those arrangements are, the work that we've done to read, review, criticize, challenge the underlying pieces and a conclusion that essentially confirms that in rather negative terms, there are no weaknesses, no significant weaknesses in arrangements to report. So essentially, it's a clean bill of health, which is why none of that pages is in red, if your printing is in color. So a clean bill of health. The report will be finalized. So the only change between this and the final will be I will insert a single date in the front page. Otherwise, this will be the formal report on twenty one twenty two, which is used to inform stakeholders as a wide over the work that's been performed by us, your external auditor. Happy to take any questions.
Any questions for our external auditors? Perhaps you want to just give us a bit of an overview about, you know, why this was delayed and why it's been taken so long, just to give people, don't forget, we're a new committee, we've only been here since May and we weren't involved in all this before. So it would be just a good idea if you could just give us a little bit of an update of how it all got into this sort of situation, Mark, if you don't mind.
So this report can only be issued to the point at which we finished our work on the twenty one twenty two financial statements. Your previous paper was around the approval of the financial statements. So obviously, we can't issue the report until you, as a council, have approved your accounts. One of the complications in the accounts was the presentational information of PSPS in terms of group accounting. That didn't have any particular impact on on how you set your council tax and budgetary arrangements, but it was a financial reporting requirement that is tricky and complex and hit almost every single number in the financial statement, so was time consuming. The time that it took to do that, unfortunately, because of the time of that, and as things go, things happen in the world which impacted on the council, things such as changes in pension assumption rates, which just had to need, just just needed to be updated. So there are a number of financial reporting issues that arose that just needed to be dealt with. Key thing for me was, yes, the financial statements need to be correct and accurate. But none of them would have impacted on your ability to make decisions over your budget setting. That's an important factor and ultimately, that's why I can give you a clean opinion over your arrangements.
And are your working relationship with PSPS a little bit more online now? Are you happy the way things are going?
Yes, we're substantially all the way through the twenty two twenty three work. So with a fair wind, I sincerely hope next committee will be signing off on that one, which will get you back on a full even keel when we hand over the audit to KPMG for twenty three twenty four.
Any questions for Mark? Are we going to? So can we just take this as a note? Everybody happy with the note, what Mark has said? All in favour of that? Okay, we don't do a proposal on the second. We just want it's been noted at the moment. So we're going to item five then now on the agenda. It's the external audit completion report. Over to you, Mark.
There's nothing really to say around this one. The only thing I reflected on recently, as a new committee since May, you wouldn't have seen the detailed report that went behind this that was issued in March two thousand and twenty three. And all this does is say that everything that we said we were going to do in March has now been done, completed, concluded. And we can proceed with issuing our opinion on the financial statements.
Thank you. On behalf of the committee, we're slightly disadvantaged as a committee because we weren't around at the time these accounts were, you know, were in relation to what these accounts were, the dates and times. So we are a bit disadvantaged back and thank you for what you've said and the report. And everybody noted that? Everybody happy? Noted. We don't need to have a first and second, do we now? That's okay. Let's go on to item six then now. Then this is the external audit verbal process progress report. Again, it's up to you, Mark. All right.
I suppose just to say, what's been really helpful is now that we've closed out the twenty one twenty two financial statements, our work on the twenty two twenty three is really well progressed. And as I said, we're hoping to get that cracked, hopefully for your next audit committee, which will then sign that that sign that year off.
Okay, any questions on what Mark has said? Are we all happy with that? Can we just agree it all, folks? Okay, we'll move on then. Thank you very much. So let me just say thank you very much for the for the report. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you very much for being our auditors for those particular years and, you know, I'm sorry, we've had a few issues, but I'm pleased we're catching up with ourselves now and this committee can obviously move forward with it. Thank you very much. Item, so we're happy with that. So we're going to item seven. This is the information governance annual update and I've got Richard here to tell us all about that. Richard, over to you.
Thank you. The purpose of this report is to provide the Audit Governance Committee with an update of the council activities and compliance in respect to Data Protection Act two thousand and eighteen, the environmental information regulations and the Freedom Information Act during the period October twenty two to October twenty three. The first area of focus is the access to information transparency, which includes the Freedom Information Act and the environmental information regulations. Your awareness, there's been a new freedom information policy in the previous in previous year. As highlighted in the report, the FLYEIRs have seen a nine percent increase in requests based on the previous year. This is similar to the other councils in the SNEDP for context. This council continues to respond to information requests and they exceed the ICO's ninety to ninety five percent required good target. The seven hundred and forty two validated FOI requests that all met the requirements to be considered are outlined month by month in the table in the report at paragraph two point one point seven, which is on page two forty nine. Paragraph two point one point eight, the report shows the level of transparency through the FOI process by outlining the limited use of exceptions, exemption, sorry, in our responses. In most cases, the few exemptions that are applied are to protect personal data or for limited elements of any response or where information is available online or confidential. The low number of internal reviews demonstrates in some degree the quality of our FOI responses in the reports period. In the reports period of all of those, only two went to the ICO and both were not upheld. So one was one was not upheld and one is outstanding, sorry. We move on to data protection. The Data Protection Act two thousand and twenty eight is due for replacement by the Data Protection Digital Information Act. This will be implemented later this year by central government. There's been twenty nine data incidents reported across the organisation, including its sub-processors. In comparison to the number of transactions, this is a very small incidence of report. None of these incidences resulted in a claim or harm to any individual. There is significant work in the IG team to facilitate data reuse across the organisation, across the organisation and with third parties such as the police, the Home Office, to try and maximize the use and efficiency of our data. There is assurance that the function of the data protection officer is involved throughout the organisation to help provide support and is engaged, as I say, at all levels of the organisation. In conclusion, the recommendation is that committee take assurance from the report and that we have demonstrated good governance in respective information management and compliance with applicable legislation. Recommendation.
Thank you, Richard. Are there any questions? Councillor Cantwell.
Thank you. Just two questions from me. On page two forty nine on the table, there are a number of freedom of information requests that were late. Could you go into a bit more detail about if there's any common themes about why these were late? Were these requests for information from the same department or similar information? And have we taken actions to bolster what is, you know, an already impressive record on FOIs, but just to make sure, you know, we can hopefully stamp these out completely?
The few FOIs that are late are often down to the pressures upon the back office teams that we make the requests to. Some of the requests are very extensive and can generate a significant number of hours of work to facilitate them. We always consider burden when we make the request. So in terms of these particular numbers, we do analyse and try to understand where those are excessive and so we can improve that performance.
Thank you very much. And just another one for me. On page two hundred and fifty one, two point two nine, you meant that it mentions that about our SAAR process and our internal ability to review. Could you expand on that process a bit and whether this is appraised and overseen by the Audit and Governance Committee about the effectiveness of our own internal process?
In terms of the subject rights under GDPR, there isn't, there is not a requirement under GDPR to have an internal review for that. We've, as a council, we tend to just check the efficacy of what we've produced and give people an opportunity to challenge to see if we've missed information. There are few and far between, maybe one a month in terms of data subjects and requests at the moment. So to generate another process to check that hasn't been undertaken, no.
Any other questions for Richard? Councillor Gleeson.
Do we have many vexatious requests?
Currently, not particularly, no.
So we don't.
Councillor Gilbert, come on.
Yeah, just a final question or question for me. I mean, obviously, this is quite important information here, the fact that in October there was fifty seven requests that were dealt with on on time, which is really good news. Fifty seven is quite a high number and there may be themes which the Audit and Governance Committee might be interested in in terms of why the subject, why these requests are being made. And I just wonder, I haven't seen anything whilst I've been sitting on this committee to indicate whether or not we do scrutinize this information. But so do we or don't we? Does it just come here as an annual report? Or do we get an opportunity through the Audit and Governance Committee to consider why these requests are being made on a quarterly basis, for example?
The seven hundred FOI requests in the past, in that period, we do do some analysis to determine pattern behaviour. We do express that to those managers, those operational leads for those areas. But up to now, we don't, we haven't provided that to or to any committee to review.
Is it something you want to consider?
Well, I mean, I don't know whether it's something I want to consider. I mean, I don't want to sort of create another tier of bureaucracy and what have you and pointless sort of discussion. But I mean, if it's, if it's, if it's important and germane to the running of the council and if this committee can assist in terms of identifying areas where more transparency might be required to offset the requirement to put in these requests, it may be helpful.
Other members think about that suggestion from councillor Gilbert?
No, I absolutely agree with what councillor Gilbert has said because there are an awful lot of freedom of information requests and if there's a pattern to them, we need, I think we need to be looking at that to try and put a stop to it, basically. So I think, yeah, I think we do need to know about it.
Is that something, Richard, you can do for the committee once a quarter or twice a year or whatever, you know, just just update us on what's happening and where we're at?
It's something that's technically possible to do, both the sources of the FOI requests and what those FOI requests are in pattern. We can do that.
Okay, that's very kind of you. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Richard? No? Richard's report is okay and acceptable and no questions on there. Everybody happy with that? That's for noting. So we'll move on. Thank you, Richard. That's very kind of you. I do appreciate that. Thank you. We'll go on to item eight now. This is the final agenda item on the work programme, which starts on page two hundred and fifty five. Are there any comments on this? Is there anything we should be thinking about putting on here or anything we should be looking at? Discussing, not now, but in the future? Any questions from members? Now's the time to speak.
I'll throw my four penneth worth in again then. I don't know whether it's down there. I haven't seen it, but it could be. And that's, you mentioned earlier on, the contracts that we have for leisure services. I think I probably gone into a bit of a cul-de-sac in terms of my request for some scrutiny over over the PRSA. I don't think that's going anywhere. But as a general kind of opportunity to sort of audit the contracts with leisure services on a more general basis rather than specific to that particular establishment may be helpful.
Is that something, Christine, that you think we should be bringing to this committee?
So again, just to clarify, you don't scrutinize the topic. This is about looking at process. However, that contract has just gone recently through a procurement process, a legitimate procurement process. I think you're veering towards scrutiny on this in terms of wanting to know the detail of that arrangement rather than the process you went through, which was a robust procurement process in order to arrive at that solution.
Be very careful to get the difference between scrutiny and governance and and that. So, you know, we don't want to be treading on somebody else's toes because it's quite painful. Okay? Councillor Gleeson.
A lot of our work seems to be on the audit side of audit and governance. And I'm do wondering whether we just need a little bit of an update on our government, our governance processes, how they're going. Are there any areas we need to look at? So just maybe a report on where we stand with how we behave at meetings, the governance of the organisation.
Okay.
I think that will be picked up when you see next year's full programme. So you're seeing to March at the moment and not the next year's full programme. You'll start to see that emerge through that.
So anybody else want to mention anything about the work programme? And I just want to sort of, while we're talking about it, the next meeting, it looks like it's on March the eighteenth. And we've got a special session at the end of the committee meeting, haven't we? Where we're doing some training and some work with, what was the lady's name?
Internal Auditor Matthew Waller.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah. And the lady who's organised it for.
Rebecca.
Rebecca, that's it, yeah. So we're all, don't forget, we've got that to follow on from the committee meeting. Let me just say, no more questions. Let me just thank Samantha, Nicole, Mark, Christine, Sean and Richard. And is anybody else here that's on an official capacity? And our onlooker from the new auditors from KPMG who's flown in from Manchester, especially to be here to see what's going on. Nice to meet you. Welcome. So thank you very much and all members. It's been quite an interesting evening this evening and quite a heavy one, as we know. And I'm going to have a chat with all our officers about trying to get these reports down to a little bit more thinner reading because, you know, you can get quite frazzled with all this, but it's it's quite interesting stuff. Anyway, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, councillors. Thank you for attending. Safe journey home. I'll see you on March the eighteenth for the next day and G meeting. We just hold your fire minute while we just go offline. Thank you.